Last call, anyone who wants to public the results of the pageant award. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meetings to order.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. De Silva?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Messick?
Here.
I now motion to appoint Tyson Hodges as president for this meeting only. I'm going to tell me automatically when the votes are going to be. Do you have a motion?
Someone.
So good by Mrs. De Silva, do I second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valentine. Call the votes.
Mrs. Ripley?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes. Motion passes by as zero. Let's move on.
The United States of America, in the history of our nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I recommend approval of the judge that is presented. Do it and have a motion.
Someone.
So good by Mrs. De Silva, do I second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the votes.
Mrs. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ripley?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes. Motion passes by Mrs. De Silva. Now to Dr. Martin, second of the award recognition. Good evening, board members. Dr. Marshhausen, Mr. Hodges. It's an honor to recognize the outstanding academic achievement of some of our hardworking students this evening. Joining me tonight are our high school principals. Mr. Matt Carroll. Mr. Tom Cochran. Dr. Julie Levens. And Mr. Mike Aron. The College Board National Recognition Program awards academic honors to African-American Black, Hispanic Latino, and Indigenous Native American sophomores and juniors. New this year is also recognition for students who are the first generation in their family to attend college. These sophomores and juniors who take eligible administrations of college board exams must also score in the top 10% of test markers or earn two AP scores of three or higher by their sophomore year. Qualified students are then notified and invited to apply for the recognition. This year, the following students have been awarded recognition. Receiving the National African-American Recognition Award, we have Nina Amara. Samar. I'm sorry, Samar Basir. Anna Bell Camp. Paula Forman. Olivia Megutis. Giada Stiles. Receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award, we have Valeria Aguilar Armenta. Leo Panalis. Alan Gonzalez. Laura Perez. Receiving the National Indigenous Recognition Award, we have Serena Barber. And tonight, receiving the National First Generation Recognition Award, we have Gavin Jones. Michael Wengler. And Andy Booth. Thirty-three Dublin City School students have been named National American Scholar semifinalists. Once again. Thirty-three Dublin City School students have been named National American Scholar semifinalists. Once again, our district has had more students receiving this honor than any other district in the state of Ohio. In fact, those two schools have had most students receive this distinction in the state for eight of the last nine years.
The approximately sixteen thousand semifinalists in the National American Scholar program were designated for more than 1.5 million program entrants nationwide. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 6,870 National American Scholarships worth about $30 million that will be offered next spring.
Students entered the competition by taking the preliminary S-18 National American Scholarship Qualifying Test used by NMSC as an initial screen of entrance. About ninety percent of the sixteen thousand semifinalists will advance to the finalist level of the competition. Every finalist will be considered for one of the American Scholarships awards offered.
And it is from this group of sixteen thousand finalists that all National American Scholarship winners will be chosen. The American Scholar nominees are selected on the basis of their skills, their accomplishments, and their potential for success in rigorous college studies. Every finalist will compete for a scholarship that will be awarded on a rolling basis between March and June 2025.
This year's awardees, Daniel Bedd. Leo Panalis. Laine Pahr. Andrew Seller. Pranitha Jamar. Akil Chogakar. Chupari Dilan. Karun Dometti. Dean Dorner. Rohan Ilan Goban. Sitan Yau. Parma Gach. Parma Arjuna. Eric Hong. Grace Hu. Adishit Panakia. Daisy J. Kim. Venithen Kanna. Isabel Kovax. Shreyas Krishna. Brenna Lee. David Ling. Katie Lu. Adi Metta. Nolan Middleton. Joshua O'Brien. Shalene Patel. Dreweth Hedy. Elizabeth Yu. Aiden Swain. Emma Van Musker. Julia Wzelowski. Grace Chu. Congratulations to these amazing students for this outstanding achievement. And to their administrators for the academic guidance and the support that they have provided these students. Congratulations, all.
You guys, um, later. Scooch as close as possible. Parents all done? All right. Okay, thank you all.
Okay, that brings us to our Board of Education committees. Interesting segue, we just mentioned a community member answer, or we'll have anybody who wants to make a note of anything.
I have a couple. So, we have the PTO, we are shooting on September thirteenth. And, um, Dr. Marshhausen shared some of the facility updates on the construction of Bishop Elementary and the preschool addition, and the Scioto High School addition, and as well as other updates, um, with the turf and the roofs and the playgrounds and all the different projects that we have coming on. He also went over the district meeting timelines for each grade level, elementary, middle school, and high school, and discussed the work that Community 12 Solutions is doing in the district, making sure resources are ready to be and best practices are being followed. One of the goals that he mentioned, potentially several of the goals, is to improve outcomes through stress and work both through staff and make sure appearance of the fidelity in the programs that we have during the district. I do want to highlight some of the questions that were just presented, because I think that's where I've gotten a lot of benefit from. I mean, it's not that tough for Marshhausen's. Intentions aren't, you know, what we hear those people say. I want to share some of the questions that participants had. And so, um, one of the suggestions was, uh, questions was how can the PTO support Bishop Elementary as a new school and they brainstorm some of the ideas going on that. One question, uh, is the Cardinal Health Building still in play, which Dr. Marshhausen explained. You know, it's still on the table for possible solution in addition to moving forward with the Scioto addition in the short term. Uh, another common question that we hear from participants is, do current students get to stay in their current high school? And the answer is yes, though they have to provide transportation. Someone asked an interesting question about neighborhood meetings for redistricting that were similar to the levee neighborhood meetings. And Dr. Marshhausen reiterated that the best thing is for, um, people to visit the website and, um, enter their input, the proper GIS form. Uh, and then, and towards the end of the meeting, there were questions about safety, which Dr. Schwanki answered very genuinely and authentically. I, I think, um, just going over again the, the process, um, that the district uses to investigate potential threats and also about how we partnership, uh, how we partner with law enforcement. And just, it was an emotional conversation, just really highlighting the need to get all the facts straight before you put anything out there. And the district really does a great job of making sure that, from the district's end, that the information that is shared publicly is shared when it should be shared and that it is appropriate information to share with the public. And I think, you know, we've talked about that already, and Dr. Marshhausen will talk about that a little bit more. But I just wanted to, um... Let's see, did you have anything you wanted to share this morning?
Nobody like making worldly questions, because I do think, uh, if a couple of committee members are thinking that needs to be made more before they can, would it encourage more people to watch our community board meeting session? I think they did answers, but no, that's, that's great. Thank you.
And I, we did have a, I have, I have one more. So we had our senior council meeting today, and I just want to thank Mrs. Adir and the Drum String Quartet for kicking off the meeting with their beautiful performance. They performed Mozart and Beethoven like professionals. Like, it was really, really good. So, and I'm not exactly, they were really good. Um, if you have the opportunity to see them, they have a concert on December tenth, and I highly recommend that you go. Um, Dr. Marshhausen gave updates on facilities and all of that stuff that I mentioned previously. Those other questions, again, uh, the participants were around the Cardinal Health Building. And then the social workers cohort, which, um, Dr. Marshhausen explained the process and the timeline, for them to find licensing providers. Kevin Patton, Patton, the DCS Pathways Counselor, and then Coach Whitefisher, number one candidate, school counselor, gave a presentation on how the district supports students navigating the college process, the different pathway options that are available, and also a little bit different, um, resources that are available. They went over the four E's, which is, you guys, for their education, employment, accomplishment, and entrepreneurship. And they went over, there are different ways that students might choose one of those E's or a combination of the E's, um, which I thought was a good student, I never actually liked, you know, some students might choose all the E's. So I thought that was a good point to make, just really customizing that for, for students, helping students to customize that. They just discussed the different classroom presentations that counselors give at each grade level, events for students and parents. There's a lot of support in the district that we're giving students for applying to college, individual meetings with counselors, and counselor admission reps. There were all kinds of things, but what really stood out to me was that, um, and Mr. Patton said this, that the district is really helping to level the playing field for some of our students who can't spend thousands of dollars on college admissions consultants and that type of thing. Having him in this, this role, this is his second year in the role, it's really, um, the district has been able to push information out to all of the students, and the same information to all of the students, no matter what building they happen to attend, and all of the information, and I think that's great. Um, just one other thing that I want to highlight is that there actually is a pathways for success, college and career fair scheduled for tomorrow, from five thirty to seven, and it's featuring Ag, Environmental Systems, Health Sciences, Public Administration, and Safety, and spoken house size also, um, whenever we can. And there are two more scheduled, one in October, and one for Tuesday, or November nineteenth also, Tuesday. They each feature different, um, career pathways that students might initiate.
I just wanted to talk briefly about key communicators, and I'm sure President Gillis will have more to add to it, but I first want to thank Cassie Dietrich for her amazing leadership on the Key Communicators Committee. She had a wonderful presentation that allowed for action, for an action-oriented meeting, where we were able to not only discuss community concerns and misconceptions, but how these key communicators can get the accurate and factual information out there that the district actually wants. So just telling them how to tell people where to navigate for the redistricting, making sure that we're directing them directly to the website, um, and, uh, using them to their best abilities. And she's already started, um, with some new, uh, new ways of doing things, including only the update just to the key communicators on what's going on in the district and what they can help spread information about. And as well as putting news articles on the district website called DCS Today. That was a, um, suggestion, uh, weekly updates, blog refresh, uh, transitioning to opinion pieces related to weekly news articles, and then also board recaps. That way, uh, people can see what actually happens, and they know where to also get the information from. So it was just very well done, um, very impressed, and I want to thank you so much for doing that.
I bring to the Mrs. Messick side, but who else do you pass the, I mean, your ability to pivot and not be the evening to be an amazing, incredible listener to our community, um, phenomenal. I am extremely impressed with how fast you were able to make changes in like three days. So, uh, just the first email was extremely exciting, and I think there are just so many people that want to feel the know and want to help with information, especially as we start doing things as our district continues to grow. And I think this is a phenomenal direct step in the right direction of outsourcing, click here to have facts. And I'm really excited about it.
I just have one committee update, and that is Business Advisory Council. We had our first meeting, and so it was a good kickoff meeting. Some of the companies are there, and it started with some questions of, of Dr. Marshhausen, some of which we've already addressed. Everyone wants to know about Cardinal, and they want to know about growth, redistricting. And the only other things I'll add that Dr. Marshhausen said in addition to what's been already discussed is he talked about not wanting to overbuild, and I thought that was, you know, an important statement to make. And he said now is the time to get the district balanced, and with the addition on the side, we'll be doing just that. Got a chance to meet Jen Hinder, she is our new board DC, she's the director for our pathways program, and she seems wonderful. She mentioned wanting to expand the pathways program conversations to middle school. And she also asked all of the companies there, you know, what, what they're looking for from us as a district. And they all want to be ambassadors to our students and help them find, you know, their passion and help them discover things that they may be interested in, and also what they may not be interested in. So, um, it's important to, to think about both sides of that. When these students get exposed to different things, it may signal something that they would really like to get into, but it also may be something where they were thinking something's great, and they get into it, and it's just not what they thought it would be. be. And there were a number of different companies there, I'll just highlight a couple. The Health Professionals Academy, so we work with the Piotr Health Institute, Columbus State. Second semester for our students is onsite, so again, they're getting exposure to different opportunities. Davis Construction, I think everyone here knows Davis Construction, they're building a giant hospital with 270 insomnia. And they've had, you know, students come to that site and learn hands-on, real workflow problems, you know, could be production problems, it could be supply chain issues. So students are getting exposed to that. And then something I had never heard of called fallback studios, where they make, it's new in Dublin, and they make real Hollywood quality models. And so they are looking for exposing our students to that pathway. And the interesting thing about that program was they really want our students to come to them because they have all the technology there. We don't have it within our schools. So again, it's a chance for our students to get out of school and to go and participate in some of these phenomenal programs and they have everything that they need right there and it's right in Dublin. So again, just my takeaways, real world, real world exposure for students, make their connections, expose them to different things, different opportunities and challenges. And again, finding out what they want to do and maybe also what they don't want to do. And then the other thing that I thought was interesting is Jen mentioned that juniors and seniors oftentimes have credits or approaching the number of credits they need and they could be taking advantage of these onsite programs. You know, again, they're out of the school and they're going to be so patient they have the credits they need and they can get the hands-on experience they need. So she sounds very excited, ready to go, and it was a great first meeting I've had.
Fantastic. That brings us to our student representative, Akdi. Do you, do we want to understand the origins of she's name?
I'm a diaper.
Okay, great.
Hello, representatives. So this weekend, Jerome High School held its annual county clash and where the cross country teams from surrounding high schools joined the race. Thanks to volunteers from all three high schools and surrounding colleges, this event was very enjoyable. In addition, the double drum marching band, Suwak field last night, sorry, last weekend. The best overall band out of 15 bands and provincial level awards and trophies. In addition, the DJHS Theater Department presents current high 451, these are optional current fifth at 7:00 PM and then Sunday afternoon sixth at 1:00 AM. And finally, the Highway Department of Education and Research, the Lord Jerome, in 5:00 to 5:00 January, so congratulations to Jerome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Bill. As I've mentioned a couple of times, I think it's always worth mentioning during this time as we go through redistricting, our website is where the accurate information will be for redistricting. Cassie and her team doing a phenomenal job updating this on a regular basis. I don't think we can say enough that between now and December, we'll be working on the elementary and middle school redistricting process and will begin in January with an internal planning team on the high school process to set parameters. Our goal is by this time next year to have that high school redistricting and those boundaries announced. And as you've said in almost every meeting, that we have the opportunity to engage with all of, our goal is for students who start at a high school to be able to finish as long as they can provide their own transportation. We've talked a little bit about school safety and tonight we heard about one incident that is one of many. And unfortunately, when we have a tragedy at the national level, it heightens everybody's concerns and causes some people to be more impulsive at the local level. We understand that when parents get anxious, they want to do everything they can to ensure that their child is safe. We want our parents to know we would never send children to school if law enforcement advised us not to. We would never send children to school if we believe they were in harm's way. Every threat, whether we deem it credible or not credible when we get it, in an anonymous tip line from school, safety tip line, an email, in communication with counselors, every tip, every see something, say something's investigated. It doesn't mean they all generate incomes to whole school communities. We need to get to the point where we know that our law enforcement and our school district is doing everything that we can to ensure that things are followed up on and our kids are safe. We have eight school resource officers in our building, we have four elementary school safety coordinators. Our communication with our law enforcement and specifically with the Dublin police is better than, that no one can have a better conversation or communication. So what we do there is critical. We can't send an email every time someone lets us know that, hey, I heard someone say this. And as was highlighted tonight, social media and naming students on social media does fun to that student every time. And adults know better what they need to do better. This is going out in a, one of Cassie's key notices on Thursday from me, that one, if a parent believes there is a credible threat, from a law enforcement and a school perspective, I understand people want to be anonymous, but if we can follow up, that significantly allows us to have an investigation take place faster. If you heard something that's apparent that you believe is a credible threat, calling and identifying yourself and being part of the solution is critical because now we can follow up and get names and, and do that right. But even when you don't, if you call the sheriff's office, there's no reason to post on Facebook because the sheriff's office is doing the investigating or the police department's doing the investigation. So, and the other thing we forget, and we talk an awful lot about, our constitution and civil rights and our American family documents, every person is entitled to due process. An anonymous tip does not convict the person on the other end of that tip. And in some of the cases, people are losing their constitutionally protected right of due process because of the chaos created by other people's fears. And we have to remember that for everybody that we deal with. So we're going to continue to harp on this, we're going to continue to ask adults to act like adults, and we're going to continue to work with law enforcement. This doesn't deter us at all from investigating tips and making sure kids are safe, but it also doesn't lead us to us making rash decisions and impulsive decisions that aren't in the best interest of students. And now to something more fun. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schwanke and Mrs. Marple because we have good news that we also want to tell them. So, Dr. Schwanke, I'll turn it over to you.
More fun, Mrs. Marple.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Marple and I are going to share a little, excuse me, excuse me, about the state report card. I'm going to start this off, just want to draw your attention to the visual up here. The state report card gives us an overall rating based on, sort of, the six components listed here. The components are achievement, progress, early literacy, graduation, and gap closing. Also, the sort of is college, career, workforce, and military readiness component. You'll see within those, there are one, there's one measure or multiple measures. The reason I put a caveat on the college, career, workforce, and military readiness is they are not yet calculated into the overall rating, but they will be next year. We don't know how yet. We assume they will do quite well with that because we really are cutting edge with our pathways program, but we're not sure how the calculations will, will kind of play out. Mr. Bill, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that within these components too, there is, there are weights put on them. So you'll see that achievement and progress are a significant weight and then graduation rate, gap closing, and early literacy are less. Next year, there will be an additional weight as mentioned earlier. So all of this is to say it's very complex to figure out how a report card overall rating is determined. We have our rating for us this year, which is 4.5 stars, down from five stars next year, last year. And already in the team have done a lot of digging into my local bodies. Again, it's just not as simple as saying, okay, we took it in one area. Beneath that umbrella too, is each individual school's report card that takes that level of digging in. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Mrs. Marple, who will just give us a brief overview of each of the measured components and where Dublin City Schools lies on that data. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schwanke. Good evening again. We are proud to say that Dublin City's all states and areas according to this year's report card. I want to emphasize that this is just one of the many measures we use to check our own pulse. There's many assessments, many reports, many ways that we look at our academics and our student progress, and this is one of them. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a high level overview of each component. We can certainly have a continued conversations on the state website, there's a really nice kind of guide to the report card that talks through calculations. But for a, for a high level overview, I'll start with achievement. Dublin remained at four stars. This is the rating that is based solely on the performance index. And the performance index is a calculation where weighted points are given to each student for how they perform on state tests from grade three through 12. And that, and that total performance level is compared to the total number of points available. So that, that measure is really based on testing. Okay, so that's how that's measured. Progress, Dublin moved to five stars from four stars last year. This rating measures growth data, often in education speak, we say now you have data. And we're proud of our work long-term in Dublin around MTSS and our other academic structures where we've spent time looking at data, engaging in conversations, and really thinking about how to move every child forward. And that's what this measure is trying to get at. This can be particularly challenging in our high achieving buildings because when a child is already hidden in the mars, to push them, there's less room to push them. So I remind you of that as you're looking and digging into the data across the district. Gap closing, DCS remained at five stars this year. This is a rating that measures how we're closing gaps in that achievement data for subgroups of students within Dublin city schools. This measure also moves specifically at our English learners, our gifted learners, and also our chronic absenteeism as well. Graduation, graduation this year, we're at four stars, that is a reduction in stars from five last year. Graduation is one measure that actually goes back in years. We're talking about graduation data, we're talking about students in the four-year and five-year cohort that graduated in spring of 2023. You've got to go back, so one measure that goes back a little further, and that's to allow for those summer graduates across the state. And although the star rating dropped, our overall rating really dropped by less than a percentage point, coming under that threshold for five stars. As we looked closely at our cohort data that we reported for the graduating class of 2023 that's reflected here, I want to make sure I emphasize that we're grateful for the opportunity to continue to educate students past the age of 18 under law in this district. Much of the time, these students have met their graduation requirements, but law allows us to continue to work with these students, ensuring that they're prepared for all aspects of their life. This isn't something captured by the state report card, but it is allowable under law and our PATH program is one that we are very, very proud of in Dublin city schools. So if that is a hit on the report card, then I think we're going to continue to serve the kids as much as they need to be successful. Dr. Marshals?
I've had lengthy conversations with both Kevin Miller, who's the director of the state's High Homes with Disabilities Department, and with Director Backing at the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce about our PATH program where we allow those students with severe disabilities to stay in our PATH program, to be active in our school community, to partner with moms and dads, and continue to serve those students until they're 22. There are many districts who would try to get mom and dad to have their kids graduate and then they don't serve those students anymore. I think it was 10 students in this cohort.
A difference of 10.
A difference of 10 students in this cohort that didn't meet the graduation requirement because we continued to serve them. And as Mrs. Marple said, and we talked about this in cabinet this morning, we'll take the hit on the graduation requirement to do what's right by our families and our students. I've been told that this may be included in the next budget. This is a difference between federal regulations and state regulations. The feds require that those students, each county is not graduates, for them to stay in public school. There's no reason Ohio on our report card can't give us credit for students who have met all of their graduation requirements, but because they have severe special needs, we will continue to serve them between 18 and 22. I think it's important that we highlight this. I've talked about this in multiple public meetings and will continue to be the drum that anytime we can serve students and families and bring a value to our community, that we're going to continue to do that. Thanks.
Absolutely. And that law does extend to our English learners as well, and so we just keep continuing to do the work of education to every student that comes to us. The next component I highlight is early literacy. Dublin schools moved to four stars from three stars. This is really a measure, the best way to describe it is it's around three different calculations around third grade reading guarantee. As this board knows, we continue to focus on our early literacy practices, it's part of journey 2030, and we will continue to do so in the future. That's just an area that emphasis for us right now and we look forward to that, continue to work with our elementary schools and middle schools. And then finally, Dr. Schwanke mentioned that the college, career, workforce, and military readiness component right now shows up on the report card, but it doesn't calculate it yet, but that will change next year. It will somehow be calculated and right now, there's actually a public comment open on some of the rules around how it will calculate through, I think, next week, as they're making decisions about that. But this one looks at 11 readiness measures that are reported by the National Fairhouse and also collectively at the graduate survey. And that's a little bit controversial right now among schools. Our return rate for graduate surveys, when we sent out, is between 5% to 10% return rate. So there's a lot of conversation about how to capture data of students once they left our care and whether or not a school should be measured on that data after they've left. So I raised that because as a new component on the rate card, there's still a lot of questions that we have and that other schools have about that. And I think I always think to myself that Dublin graduates are responding to their surveys, I wonder what that return rate looks like across the state of Ohio. So it is difficult right now with our current system that we're limited with by the state on how to find out what's, not just what their future plans are, we always know what they're projecting to do, they plan to go to a four-year college or a two-year college or straight to workforce, but then four years later, what do they actually do? So a little more coming from us and other schools about that as we move forward. And that concludes the overview of the components. Does anybody have any questions? Um, so look for more probably from us and other schools about that as we move forward. Um, and that concludes the overview of the components. Uh, does anybody have any questions? I appreciate you.
And after you've spoken, does anyone have any questions? Back to press details.
Report is in action by Mr. Treacher.
We have two items for each night. Uh, the first one is approval of student activity purpose clauses. There are thirteen of them, three from funeral campus and ten from side of high school. Again, this gives us the ability to create a cash account and track the revenue and their expenses, and also gives the group, future club members a guide for how to operate. We also have a donation from Davisville School PTO. They actually run a teacher helping teacher fund, and they are donating nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to teachers and staff. They're giving a hundred dollars to teachers and fifty dollars to other staff to buy classroom materials.
Before we vote, um, after reviewing these thirteen new clubs, I was wondering if it was possible that maybe, um, we add to our meeting, having the clubs come to present their idea for a club, uh, maybe during a pilot participation moment. I'm thinking that, I feel like we're just going to see rise in trend of more and more clubs, and I'm thinking we're having this whole circle moment for them to really see the, the process on. This is, you find out if you have the idea, you get an advisor, you go through all these phases, and this is kind of how the final step in the process. And I mean, and getting opportunity, we get to see, uh, these kids in action and their passion for what they're doing. For me, uh, I think we're meeting a great vision.
And as we talk about teaching students responsibility and upper speaking skills and being able to stand up for what they believe, I also think that it would be worthwhile if a student or a group of students wants to start a club and wants to start an activity account, that they should get to come to a board meeting with the advisor they've chosen and in three to five minutes explaining why they want to start a club, why they believe they need an account, and what the purpose of their club is. So, Mrs. Gillis, as we talked about, uh, agenda review, I think it's something that would be a great idea. Is anybody opposed to that idea?
I think it would be a great invitation to off, offer the opportunity, but I wouldn't want to make it like a requirement because these kids are pretty active and have lots of activities that they are in, and I don't want to make it a requirement or they have to be here in front of me, but I think it's a great opportunity for them to present.
I don't want to be cynical, but one of the things that we are here is we have students starting clubs so they can add them to their resumes. And that the reason that they're starting this is they can put that on the founder of Pickwell Club, and some of these clubs we create the accounts for, and the next year they cease to exist. So I, I do in some ways want to make it so that you have to have some skin in the game and that you can't just say you're going to start a club, find an advisor, start your club for a year, put it on your resume and college application, and then it kind of slides to the wayside. So I think if you want us to approve a club, you have to have the willingness to put in the time to come here and in public to say why I want that. It doesn't mean we want to start, we can give them flexibility, um, in terms of which evening would you like to come to?
I think the flexibility might be helpful, although we are pretty much on Mondays. You know, like if they play a sport, if they play it's on Mondays, they might not get here. So as long as we have some leeway with that and you can work with people, I think it might be an option.
Okay, so hypothetically on record tonight, we're talking about thirteen presentations? Could be. I guess so. I am a advocate of, and obviously I'm led by the United, creating engagement and folks having, however, I think we also have processes in place beyond what we do, uh, with student activity purpose clauses where before something events are getting to us, it goes through committee, it goes through some sort of process so that it's vetted out, prepared, and so forth. Have you thought about what this might look like because, uh, thirteen different presentations tonight could be all over the board, and I don't know if it's necessarily welcome to encourage folks to come and talk and so forth. It's mostly the best use of time. Or sending those kids up for success if there isn't a pro, a possible place people are going to end up over here.
Got it.
I would, uh, second what Mr. Valentine says, and I think that we can allow flexibility with the timing as well, but we don't necessarily have to have them here, but if they feel more comfortable sending us a presentation, that's two, three minutes, uh, so the board can actually see what these are. Personally, I'm really interested in that, so I wish they would. I don't know about you, but I really wish they were here because I want to know about that. So I think that we can combine both what Mr. Valentine has stated, um, and with Dr. Marshall's and possibly with flexibility, allow them to either come to, come and make an in-person presentation for two or three minutes or send this one that we can preview before a meeting.
If I may, I think, um, it's important to note too, that when students want to start a club, they go to their administrators, they go through a whole process. So I think we can do all of these things. I just wonder if we might ask them to create, um, a compelling argument for why they have a club and have to include that in the board report. And then in terms of bringing them into public, I wonder if we might want to expand our budget allegiance to include middle and high school. We typically stay with elementary and middle, but we might include high school because we always have an off meeting to the pledge, or we might invite, we could say to the principals, bring your club and have them come and say what they do, and then we might have, maybe say, close the loop on some of the work we're doing. So just an idea, I can continue to discuss it, but the, the thinking is out there and administrators have approved it before it comes to those.
Okay, I like that. I, I just want to get a conversation flowing your minds, thinking, I know we want to sit through a lot of it. I, I was thinking maybe during like our pilot participation where we designated this hour and like, maybe, I'm, I'm just throwing out one of those. I, I appreciate everything you guys are giving back to me. Um, with all of that said, let's, uh, it's recommended by the treasurer that the board of education approve items six B and six C. Is there a motion? So moved. So moved by Mrs. Messick. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. DeSova. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Messick.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSova.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruby.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Uh, motion passes five to zero, moving on to the next agenda. The state report card was our report tonight. Thank you. Fantastic. Um, Department of Operations.
And we will align for tonight. This is, uh, payment and move for transportation for RASO and declared practical. As I mentioned in the past, that, uh, these comment, as they, as they come in practical or as payment moves come on board, that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay, approval for the payment low transportation for the twenty-four point five school year. Is there a motion? So moved. So moved by Mrs. Ruby. Is there a second?
Second.
Would I, by Mr. Valentine? Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ruby.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSova.
Yes.
Mrs. Messick.
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero, moving on to human resources.
All right, I'm starting. Starting us out with the certified section tonight, uh, let's see a certified of retirement and law of resignation. Scott Sweet will be retiring after twenty-five years of service in Dublin. I learned today that Mr. Sweet, Mr. Gill, opened at Carmel School in nineteen ninety-nine, which is where the nurse, and this price has decided to resign to personal arrangements. That's also on the board agenda tonight. Um, I've said this before, but a time for two substitutes who are defined per the MRA these individuals, they do not run through the ESC like other substitutes, and they do, but have a skill set required as to pay a derivative, and that's why you see two of them on tonight. Um, anytime a staff member asks them, will it be five unpaid days, I believe you bring these to the board for approval, and there are two that are on tonight for your approval. We're still planning to do a few early school year needs, which is why we have a few more six period days before you, and then there's several athletic head workers listed. Um, and then we have a student intern starting from this teacher's team as well that's on the agenda. And the supplementals that are on tonight are for athletics and music, and then you'll just see a few that are good of resignations where they are salary directions in this section also. Moving on to our classified agenda, there's one retirement and then three resignations. Alaka Morana will be leaving Dublin City School after fifteen years of service. She's currently at the Stodyne in Dublin, who wish her the best. And then you'll see six new hires, several unpaid leave of vacancies, uh, in this section as well. Um, a different piece on here, you see an approval payment for the twenty-twenty-five Dublin Literacy Conference. Those listed offers are paid through registration fees of this event, and that's on for your approval tonight as well. And then the last item is one site, and it's actually one that you approved last time. I mean, that this is a revision and it's just add one staff member, uh, to be paid for sixth grade orientation for our full school. And that's all that I have for tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. It's recommended by the superintendent that board of education approve items eleven A through eleven D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Messick. Is there a second? Second, second by Mrs. DeSova. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Messick.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSova.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruby.
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. All right, and in accordance with Ohio provided code, the Dublin Board of Education will go into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official. This is a motion, yes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. DeSova, okay, seconded by Mrs. Ruby. Uh, call the board, please.
Mrs. DeSova.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruby.
Yes.
Mrs. Messick.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine. Mrs. Gillis.
Yes, uh, motion passes five to zero, no action to be taken after executive session, and we will adjourn meeting.